We'd like to begin this meeting. Bob Ooten is on his way and Mike's out of town. So you're stuck with me. And, uh, roll call please.
Thank you. Vice President Jim Ferryman.
President.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
And Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Thank you.
Are there any, uh, this is the time for public comments. I see we do have some visitors with us. Is there any, would you like to speak? I don't have a green card though. Okay. Any public comments? Uh, Ed, it's your turn.
Mr. Vice President, before Ed speaks, could I just have the board a firm reminder to when you speak to speak into the microphone because last night I was been watching some of the board meetings and it's kind of hard to pick up the voices so if you can just-
Thank you for that.
-remember to speak in the microphone, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Good morning, Vice President Ferryman, members of the board. Ed Roberts, your Code Enforcement Officer for the Sanitary District. I'll be presenting the 2018 Code Enforcement Officer Report for the month. Just to report to the board, sir, we had a total of seven proactive scavenging investigations that were spread out sporadically throughout the city. If you direct your attention for the benefit of the board, I have included a map with a synopsis of the locations and a narrative of each and every one of those contacts. Are there any questions from any of the board members regarding the scavenging report?
Just are there any repeat-
Pardon me, sir?
Are there any repeat offensive people?
Not yet, sir. Most of the folks do recognize me out there and kind of leave the area once they see the vehicle's presence. We do have that constant revolving influx of people coming into the town. So I've had several that I have contacted many, many times. It's just one of those situations where once the vehicle is inside the alley or in the location, most of them will just ditch whatever they have with them or they'll break contact and walk away into some interior apartment location where I can't get to them. But most of the people know exactly what the district is doing, what I'm there to do, and just like a police contact, it's luck of the draw. If you come across a repeat offender, it'll be addressed at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Do any of the other board members have any questions regarding the scavenging?
Do you have any?
Do I?
All right, sir. Moving along. For the month, I conducted a series of 119 notices that were issued to residents regarding the violations of the trash cart ordinance that we maintain requiring removal from public view. No issues of note. We did ultimately achieve compliance in the course of that month. And there were no graffiti instances that I really dealt with. One thing I did want to note for the board members, if you go through one of my narratives, I had a contact with an individual who had some mental health challenges. It was evident based off of my training and experience that it was not a safe contact to continue, so I disengaged and I did however, report it to the Costa Mesa City Hall folks who do the mental health, just to let them know I gave a description. Based off of what Mr. Ooten dealt with a couple of months ago, that's very present in my mind. So anytime that I deal with anyone who has any kind of a disability or mental health challenge that I perceive to be some sort of a threat or could potentially affect my safety, I'll do a referral over to the mental health team that Costa Mesa City Hall maintains. And whether it be verbal or just, it covers us as far as letting them know what the descriptor of the person is and the last known location for them.
Do they actually do any follow-up with that?
They do, sir. They're actually very good about it. I don't know personally, I can do further inquiry to see what they did with my complaint. I do it more as a just, A, this is what I'm dealing with in the-
That was the right thing to do.
In the alley, yeah. You know, the whole goal is not to make any kind of criminal out of anybody like that. It's just, I'm obviously going to be concerned for my safety when I'm out there talking to the individual. If it has the potential or propensity for any kind of violence, it's easier for me to just walk away, disengage, leave the scene, and let the professional folks come in and deal with what they have to do. But all that person did was just, you know, I perceived it wasn't going to go in the right direction and I just disengaged at that point.
Do you remember what street that was on or what area?
Uh, no, sir. It was over concentrated by the Baker and Royal Palm area because I circle the area. I'm in and out of the alley because most people see the car coming down and they scuttle in a different direction. It would have been right there in the, I believe, if memory serves right, right at the entrance to the alley coming off of Baker if you're going southbound from Baker into that area of Royal Palm.
Okay. I know exactly what you're talking, because I was just curious for myself because I travel that area also a lot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board regarding the Code Enforcement Officer Report?
Anything? Very good report.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks so much, sir.
Organics tonnage report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Actually, item numbers two and three are just for your information and staffs available to answer any questions you may have.
Let's see. Seems like it's still going up a little bit.
It's still steady.
Yeah, a little bit. Looks good. Okay, let's move along to item three, solid waste diversion report.
Again, just happy to answer any questions. This is a standard reports that we submit to the board every month, giving you an update on our diversion rate.
Anybody have any observations or questions? Now, the light green one on that report, is that organics?
Yes.
And that seems, is that, it's in the second column right here, isn't it? That seems like it's going up a little bit too.
Yes, that's a good sign. That's probably the highest one we've ever had.
Yeah, it's good. Okay, that was just my question. Okay, item four, consider revisions of Costa Mesa San District's fat, oil, and grease program.
One second, if, Mr. Vice President, if we can delay this item until Director Ooten arrives, this is, this was his, I think, one of his pet peeves. So we can just wait till he arrives and move on to five.
We'll put number four in, on the table. Let's see, number five, goodwill collection event.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'll be giving this report. So back on Saturday, August 18th, the district teamed with Orange County Goodwill and the OCC Recycling Center to have our second donation event. We had such an event a few years ago. We thought another event would be worthwhile since there's evidence of people throwing their clothes away in the trash. I think I shared with you a story that they, it was, it was a high number of clothes being thrown away in the trash. And so we thought this might be a good event to help collect the usable clothes and reuse them for those who need it and also help our diversion. So we had that event on Saturday, August 18th. It was from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Unfortunately, it just wasn't as popular as our first event. You know, this event we had last, on August 18th, had eight cages full of donated materials, clothes, where the one we had in 2012, I think they filled 30 cages. So a big difference. And even though it wasn't as popular as a few years ago, it still helped our diversion and increased our diversion almost 63 percent, which was good. So I think this is definitely a program we can do in the future to help increase our diversion. So we're thinking what we can do next time to increase participation is maybe coincide it with our mulch program in the springtime. So people can drop off their clothes and then get some free mulch, kind of do like that, something like that, in the springtime, kind of like tie it with the spring cleaning kind of event. So that was it. But, you know, again, it's still, it was still successful, but, you know, we're learning what we can do better for next time and so that's what staff's working on and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a cost factor for us on doing that?
Well, on our, in our financial review, we did spend about $1,700 promoting and advertising the event. Then we had some staff hours. Gina and Abila worked that event and I think that's about it as far as goodwill. And we paid for lunch, I think we paid for lunch for everyone that worked there. But the goodwill staff is on their time. Mike Carey was the only one in there from OCC. He donated his time there. So that was, so the expenses is limited. There's not that much.
What do you mean, doing, what are they, oh, they're collecting blankets?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes. You know, and I, not to be picky, but goodwill is really not goodwill. I mean, you know that.
Yes, they're there to make money.
They're in it for the money. They don't give a nickel to anybody. And I would just assume that, you know, we could pair up with Salvation Army or something because the money gets to where it needs to get to.
Sure. We will, we will reach out to them, see if they want to do it, absolutely.
I was thinking the same thing personally, but so it's pretty good thought. Yeah, I mean, nothing against goodwill, but guys making millions and not sharing the wealth. Okay. One question, what do they provide? Do they provide the cages?
Yeah, they provide the cages and the trailers and staffing.
And how many, so you have, you have potential 30 cages for clothes?
They could bring those, yes.
Is that a one-day event?
Yes, it's a one-day event from 9:00 to 3:00.
I went to-
Did you? I'm at the goodwill, I donate a lot of stuff to the goodwill, but-
Excuse me?
I donate a lot of old golf equipment to the goodwill.
Oh.
Hey, they're happy to take it, but I wonder if Salvation Army takes that type of-
I'm sure that, yes, they, yeah.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
Did you want to make any comments?
I'm just kidding, I'm just telling Bob, beating the turd.
You're leading a dollar short there, buddy.
I know.
We, do you have any comments on the goodwill collection event?
No, I wasn't there, but, you know, I think, I think it's a great, great event. It's a good start and a way to collect, you know, various items in the community.
Okay. Let's go back to item four. Consider revisions of CMSD's fat, fat, oil, grease, fog program.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So you might recall back on June 12th of this year, staff presented to the board the inspection program at the camp, which is a retail and food service campus located on Bristol Street. We were having some issues with some of the restaurants when we were, also when we were cleaning our pipes, we were finding a lot of grease. And so we asked EEC to do some focused inspections over at the camp. We presented that to the board and the board directed staff to bring this program back, the fog program back for discussion and also first to consider some recommendations to revise the program. So staff asked EEC to develop some recommendations, which they have presented to you, which is attached to their July 5th, 2018 letter. And so today I have Joe Jenkins from EEC to explain those recommendations and we would need further directions from you today how you want to proceed. I'm turning it over to Joe.
So, so yeah, hopefully everyone has a copy of our technical memorandum, the July 5th memorandum. So mainly here today, we, I think we can just go over each of the section's recommendations. Maybe not each one in horrible detail, but if there's one you'd like to focus on in a little bit more detail, we certainly can do that. So starting with our recommendations for the fog control ordinance updates, this is mainly for section 6.07 of the district's operations code that deals with fats, oils, and grease. The first one here is to differentiate between a conditional waiver and a conditional variance in the ordinance. And the definition between a waiver and a variance, basically a waiver means the FSC does not have to install a grease interceptor at all. These are for, you know, your limited food preparation type facilities. And a variance means instead of a large concrete gravity grease interceptor, they're putting in a hydro mechanical grease interceptor. So just making sure that's differentiated in the language is important. Two is just assessing enforcement capabilities, particularly in shopping centers with multiple food service establishments. And really this is where you have multiple food service establishments in a shopping center and they don't have grease interceptors. So establishing the, basically documenting the procedures for how you would go about identifying the most critical significant contributors of fog to the sewer system and then going about enforcing on them and eventually requiring retrofitting of grease interceptors. Yes.
Is this a new addition to the policies?
Yeah, it's, we have a policy in place to do it, but it's more documenting it and putting in the step one, step two, step three type procedures for it.
Well, this is, this is basically adding some criteria-
Mm-hmm.
-to do the assessment.
Right. All right, and documenting it and then following that criteria, you know, each case. And also making sure that the facilities are aware of that criteria and of that procedure, you know, that they know that this is what's going to happen if there's an issue. So, three, further define requirements for grease interceptor serving multiple FSCs on a single parcel. So this is where restaurants are sharing a single interceptor. And really what this is, is right now, the way the fog control permits work within the district is that they're specific to the FSC. Each, each food service establishment is issued a wastewater discharge permit. So this is just making sure that the property owners are also brought into the requirements to make sure that if you have a facility sharing an interceptor, that property owner is ultimately responsible to make sure that interceptor is maintained well and not causing a problem.
Is, question, Joe, is that adding the property owners new to the section?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Making sure that they're included, either given a permit or at least further defining the requirements for the property owner.
So how, how would you distinguish variants? What would you be saying for variants?
For the-
That they would have to come up with for variants.
Mm-hmm. Oh, for the, the conditions of the variance? So right now, when we issue a variance or a waiver to a facility, we issue a waiver letter or a variance letter. And so within those conditions, it's adhering to the rules and regulations of the program and making sure the facility is maintaining the device. If so, if it's a variance and they're allowed to put in like a hydro mechanical grease interceptor, that they're taking care of that device, they're pumping it and cleaning it, you know, very frequently. They're very effective devices as long as they're being maintained the way they're supposed to be maintained. And as soon as a facility stops maintaining them, then they can start causing problems. And so as long as they're able to maintain those and take care of them good, then they're able to keep them and keep their conditional variance. When they stop lacking on it, that's when you can revoke that variance and make them put in a larger interceptor.
See, I'm all for a variance more than just a waiver because, you know, we really have to kind of keep up with what's going on or it gets out of hand where, you know, you wind up having inspectors to go just to see what's going on and to be able to kind of snag them and say, you know, that's not approved. With a variance, you've got some teeth where you're saying, you know, this has to be done. With that, we have no problem. But waiver to me, you're opening doors.
And it's, and it's a, the waiver isn't like a permanent waiver, it's still a conditional waiver. It's only, it's just that it's issued to a facility that you determined at the time is not going to discharge fats, oils, and grease to a sewer system. And so I guess the recommendation here is just make sure everything is clearly defined in the rules and regs and in the ordinance. There's, there's already sections in 6.07 for issuing conditional waivers and conditional variances, so this just further defines it and establishes it.
If two restaurants are on a one parcel and they're sharing, you know, the equipment, I'm assuming that they would split any costs or any, and have an agreement internally between the two of them. Is that how that works or?
Yeah, it's kind of on a, on a case-by-case basis. We've seen some parcels where a single restaurant is managing and maintaining it and then they're, they're sharing the costs with the other facility. And then we've also seen where the property manager is the one who takes care of it and then they, they then transfer those costs into like their lease agreements or something like that. So-
Anyone else have any question? Follow up on that then, it's up to the property owner to make sure it's taken care of, right?
Yeah.
That's a new addition.
Yeah, and so that's where we, that's what we'd want to clearly define, that would ultimately be their responsibility. And if they're going to install a shared interceptor, have a shared interceptor, that's going to be the property manager who's going to be responsible for taking care of it. And they're going to be the ones, when we go out and do inspections, that we're going to contact and we're going to expect them to have the records for pumping and the receipts and if we tell them to get a pump, they're going to be the ones, they're going to schedule it.
I'd like to hear from Scott as far as where you think we're going with this. Do we put together something now or are we just letting, you know?
Well, no, I think, I think what Joe here presented are some good recommendations to consider, so we just need some direction of what you're comfortable with. Yeah, if you're comfortable implementing all of them or some of them, let us know and we'll bring this back on the September 26th board meeting for your approval consideration.
Rob then. Oh, Rob?
Thank you. So I sit on the regional committee and updating the ordinance was something we discussed and it looks like most agencies, they all change their ordinance when the, everything started, 2006 or 2002. But since then, we've found that a lot of agencies have not updated their ordinance and therefore they have not taken into account the advancements in hydro mechanical grease interceptors, et cetera, et cetera. We've already, from EEC, we've already amended our fog ordinance once. This would be the second time and it's, it's, it's very good that we're doing that. It keeps us on top of things and it's a good example to show the other agencies that you've got to go back and revisit this and take into account the current conditions and stay updated with what's going on. So this is a very important showing of us keeping up with the industry.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions to Rob?
Mesa Verde Shopping Center, Seegerstrom owned property is just adding three new little Joe, do we, do we get to review what Seegerstrom is selling those restaurants? And they also connected to an existing grease interceptor.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, they're constructing a new grease interceptor.
Oh, maybe it's behind the fence and I didn't see it.
Right, they, they did have one and they are building a new one for the three restaurants.
I thought they'd dug a hole out to that thing.
Yeah.
Excellent question. Where are those, you talked about the big new white building?
It was Sioux plantation before.
Right, is there three going in that same spot?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't know that. I thought it was just one. And they're going to be on one interceptor?
Yes, and that's where Joe has made it clear that at that level, the property owner needs to sign, not the tenants or lessees or whatever.
So that would, would that be Seegerstrom?
Yes.
Are you working with them, Rob, that are doing this or?
I, I checked all the plans for it and Joe checked the grease interceptor part of it.
You know, that building next to the restaurant, is that going to be a shopping area, that one where the other Mexican restaurant was?
It's going to be a parasol.
That's what I thought, it's going to be a spa.
This is a brand-new, modernized, 35 individual-
That's what I thought, but it's not, not a restaurant.
No, it's a spa.
Okay, it's a spa, okay. Okay, just for curiosity, I thought that was the case.
Judy had a question if you could go on.
Well, just because I sit on the same committee with, and working on one of the regional work force, the whole board, that to me, this is, you're behind the eight ball. And you're asking whether this should be done or whatever, this should have been done already. And my understanding was that sharing of interceptors isn't allowed. And Ralph Palmaris is one of them too, that advocates that it's not allowed. He's one of the top, you know, people look to him and even calling him other areas of the country, asking for his opinion, he's with the Thoroughwater District and is an inspector going down, and it's much the same as what EEC does, that interceptors are not allowed to be shared. So, but the thing is too, definitely that it is, the owner's on the property owner, but this hasn't even been done yet.
So we're going in the right direction?
Yes.
Well, what Judy is bringing up, the fact that we do allow multiple restaurants on one interceptor and that's why Joe is ratcheting down the requirements as a recommendation to the board. It can work, it does have limitations and it certainly doesn't work if there's a continuing turnover of restaurants and all. But it's not the end of the world to have more than one restaurant on a grease interceptor.
So we're not violating any legal precedent?
No.
No, but the thing is too, because cut lightly, you guys are under consent decree. So the thing is, is you want to show that you are doing everything that you can to avoid any issues in the future or they're going to come down, I mean, even harder than they already have.
I don't believe we're under-
Yeah, we're not on a consent decree, I don't know where you're getting that, we're not on a consent decree.
ACL.
But they do that, they do that for everyone to get to-
That's a fine.
It's a fine.
It's a fine, but it's something that you've done wrong all these years. So the thing is, is you want to step up your game and not just do the same thing. And I know that it's been expressed before, especially by Director Ooten from his experience with OCC, that, you know, there is a problem and this is what I brought up to you guys too in the last meeting, that I'm developing a project and I work with UCI and UCA, UCLA, to work with these property owners too, because I've spoken with large property owners and they are not aware of their duty. Literally, to them, grease interceptors are fail-safe and everything can be swept to it and that's not where it's supposed to be. They're supposed to be wiping and whatnot. So I mean, there's a lot more stuff that needs to be going on that when, you know, you say as the property owner to do something, but they don't know what they're supposed to be doing and that's not high on their, you know, docket.
Don't we have a code, a standard that they're, that they have to meet?
I've inspected thousands, I conducted thousands of inspections, hundreds of restaurants. I used to work with the city cleaning committees and kind of run out and inspecting, so we will go directly to all of their restaurants and I still conduct inspections on a contact basis. And so then Joe can attest to and Rob that you go in and as soon as you leave, there's turnover of management staff, things happen. So this is not high on the list, it's not an ocean requirement and so it's serve safe requirement, we're not doing the training with the employees, employees don't care. I've been told even by UCI that they'll shove whatever they want or sponges get away from them somehow and they go down. And so that's one of the reasons I'm working with them to try and do source capture because then there's no way that they could be putting stuff down. And that literally, they're not supposed to be flooding the floors and things like that anymore, especially with water conservation in effect. And so that's where, you know, a lot of the agents now are saying, you know, source capture is better. It also then can be contributing to the organics capture diversion, a very check for the calendar cycle. And so that can increase the numbers when it's captured like that. The ground trap grease and stuff isn't that valuable and it's very difficult to clean and everything too, so that's, I'm working on, you know, putting this project together to prove a concept, but- So that's, I'm working on, you know, putting this project together, proof of concept, but...
Rob, can I ask a question?
Third one.
On that development in Mesa Verde, there's multiple restaurants going in there. Are they working off an individual?
Sewer systems?
Or grease interceptors?
Grease interceptor.
They're going to share.
Right. So each of the three will share a single common grease interceptor? And so I think to clarify, when we say it's ultimately the property owner's responsibility for the grease interceptor, that's solely on maintenance. And so making sure that they're pumping it so it meets twenty-five percent rule, which is the district's maintenance criteria. You know, we'll work with them to figure out what that frequency is with, you know, depending on the types of facilities going in there. It could be quarterly, it could even be monthly for them to make sure that they maintain that. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we're just going to ignore the restaurants that are going in there. You know, we're going to go in and do kitchen best management practices with these facilities, make them follow and adhere to those fog control program requirements of training their employees, you know, and inspecting them regularly to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. So those three facilities will still receive permits and have to adhere to permits. And then also, the property manager will get their own permit for their grease interceptor.
Do they require anything from the city or is it a code, a code based on what we're telling them?
It's mainly what we're telling them. Yeah, the city wouldn't have any jurisdiction in terms of fog program.
Clarify your question, Rhonda. Because you are the sanitary district here, you're the collection system, you don't actually treat the wastewater, you're.
No.
There's a difference. Whereas they, there are the questions, and they have utilities divisions, that's where there's a difference. So you are the collection system here. Where at least they may have their collection system, but they look to the Total Water District to.
I don't think nothing to beach has their own.
They just have utilities division and wastewater. They're considered a collection system, same as you are.
Well, I think, I think it's well to be proactive and I think, you know, Judy's thoughts are important, but I think the results of our program and the potential upgrades should be the proof. And basically, you know, we have had a year where we had no sanitary sewer overflows. And the grease processes that we hire EEC to do, I agree, are chaotic. And all the things you state happen and we, and we work very hard. We pay a very professional contractor, you know, to be out there. And the work that they've done has resulted in no grease sanitary sewer overflows.
Since 2015.
Reasonably, historically. And so, you know, I was in charge of that committee, the WDR committee, when I worked for Orange County Sand District. And since that 2002 ordinance and the 2006 ordinance and the sanitary sewer plan, which grease is a potential prominent part of that, our searing agency anyway, has had good, very good success. I don't want to minimize, you know, what we can do. It, you know, I've been out there and I've watched a contractor scooping the grease over the grease baffle. And, you know, I was totally astounded. But, you know, EEC has been a very proactive part of our effort. And, you know, these things will further clarify it, not that, you know, we can't do more and we should do more. And then we, as an agency, we're generally very proactive. You know, we were very proactive in 2002 and 2006, the state was, you know, to work on sanitary sewer overflows. But so I think, you know, I think, I think you're right. We should continue, you know, to assess the situation and this is part of it.
Yeah, I think I was just clarifying.
Yeah.
Maybe they should.
Move on. Joe, let's go.
Okay. Yeah, sure. So I think moving on to number four, this is just further defining enforcement response actions. And again, this can just be a section referencing, you know, available enforcement actions. We have in the document, this enforcement response flow diagram. And so it could be referencing the diagram. You know, we'll have to talk about how to further document the enforcement response process for FSEs and certainly there may be some modification needed to this flow chart as we, you know, further discuss some of our recommendations. But just making sure it's clearly defined, all the different enforcement tools that are available to the district and the ordinance. And then the last one is adding definitions for automatic grease removal devices and maintenance requirements for these devices within the ordinance section. You know, they're very different from a typical hydro mechanical grease interceptor. We typically don't hold an automatic grease removal device to the, sorry, to the twenty-five percent rule maintenance, because if they're hitting twenty-five percent, there's something probably seriously wrong with them at that point. And so it's mainly, we're just checking their internal components, making sure they're being maintained the way the manufacturer says they're supposed to be and making sure they're functioning properly. And so there's daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, you know, maintenance requirements for these devices and just making sure that the FSEs are following those and that those requirements are well documented.
One last comment or question. Joe, how is OC Public Health involved in this process and are there any? I know Rob works with them and Judy sits on that committee, but.
Yeah.
How, can, is there anything we need from them?
Definitely we need.
Restaurants.
Right. Yeah. Definitely we need to work with, you know, OC Public Health. I think it's good to get them out with us to facilities so they can see these devices and make sure that they're familiar with them. We've had in a couple instances recently where some devices that we think are very okay for facilities, especially from a health concern standpoint, they've been negative on and haven't accepted. And so, you know, we probably like, probably it's just because they're not familiar with these devices. So I think it's definitely good to work with them, you know, and talk about, go through, here's the devices that the district's going to allow and make sure that the health, the health department is also okay with these devices. And what requirements, you know, are they going to have for them within the facilities? Is it going to be, you know, not being maintained during business hours, making sure they're not in food prep areas? Do they have to be mounted and sealed to the floor or up off the floor? You know, what requirements do they want to see? Just so we're in sync from a plan review and new installation requirement standpoint, you know, and from their requirements.
I want to give a shout out to the people who do work and Ralph Powell Morris and Rob and Judy are key people that work on that WDR committee. I used to go to those meetings and I was very impressed with the level of detail and thought that, you know, that goes into the new devices and the evaluation of them and the state of the art. You're all to be congratulated. EEC was there and wrote the grease interceptor ordinance for the Orange County Sand District, or the twenty-five, basically for Orange County Sand District, which became a model ordinance for twenty-five agency cities and sanitary districts.
Right.
So, you know, you've been, you all have been a big part of our proactive protecting the environment.
Thank you.
Rob?
I just wanted to say that we've always tried to be business friendly and give the restaurants a shot. And that's another of the reasons that we allowed shared interceptors, because it being a very strict, one-size-fits-all is very hard on the smaller restaurants. And I know this is Seegerstrom and all that, but as you know, we've even considered a interceptor program, et cetera, et cetera. So if you can be business friendly, we try to be.
You want to continue, Joe?
Yeah, so that's it for the ordinance section. You know, the last section is just on FSC inspection and FSC enforcement. And so we have, you know, some recommendations for changes or improvements or Judy?
Has everyone had a chance to review?
I have a question.
Yeah.
On number four, do we currently get submitted service records? Is that new?
Oh, you mean on the inspection one? No, that would be new. We don't receive service records currently. We do for if we require hydrojet line cleaning, but not for grease interceptor maintenance or grease interceptor pumping.
Is this your recommendation to include this?
Yes. I think that though that program has to be, you know, further defined and evaluated, you know, if you do a full-blown, you know, they call them preferred pumper type programs where you require all facilities to submit their records or you have pumper submit records, it requires a lot of administrative oversight to make sure people are doing it, you know.
Those records go to you or to us?
Preferably to us.
Yes, that's.
Yeah. You know, and so it would be, you know, a lot of extra time in the office we'd have to spend keeping track of it and staying on top of it. I think where we would want to roll it out would be if we have facilities that are having problems with routine non-compliances, putting them on this requirement where for like a year or period of time, they have to submit their pumping records to us. That would save us from going out and doing, you know, follow-up compliance inspections.
How many services do we have that fall into that category that?
It's probably less than ten at the moment. I could probably think of ten facilities right now that probably fall under, you know.
I'm assuming that it's going to cost us more money if it's going to cost you more staff time to do this stuff.
If we roll it out in the way I mentioned for non-compliance facilities, it shouldn't cost additional money to the fog program. If we want to do a full-blown preferred pumper program where everyone is submitting records or pumpers are submitting records, then possibly could.
My recommendation would be that it's the all of the area, because the pumpers unfortunately are coming and going everywhere. And this is something that Tempe did, or well, no, Tempe didn't do the preferred pumper, but I've been warned and they have them.
Yeah.
I think it needs to be an area-wide type thing where then it's shared, you know, and then someone then is in charge of it, then that's the thing, who's in charge of it. So if you guys want to lead the charge and it's like a pilot thing and then you get everyone else on, that would be, you know, a good suggestion. But it is a good thing because then you have more controlling companies, you know, that's being monitored. And because this is a good thing too, that I've seen when I've been actually looking at the maintenance of the pumping and then the management and the property owners don't have a read of it or anything where it's a PEC is looking at them and they know exactly what's going on and looking at the paper.
How many different pumping organizations are there out there?
In this area, we have a list of ten to fifteen companies. And so regularly you have probably five or six that are regular and then you have like a handful of smaller companies that are doing it. So it'd be, I don't know, six to ten, we'd have to.
I believe we have them listed in our SSMP.
Yeah, we have.
To listen to us.
We have a list of them.
I would think maybe we start off with your suggestion of the ones that we look at and then see how that works after a year. And then if we think it's viable to move with everybody.
Right.
Just a thought before we, for a discussion.
Be, we'd have to meet with each of the pumping companies if we're going to do it with all the companies to make sure that within their own policies, they're allowed to share their FSEs information and then go through all the legal permissions and, you know, but yeah. Thank you.
We've been discussing the ordinance. Is the policy, will it be updated? Or is the ordinance different than the policy?
It sounds like we'd need both a policy, a contract amendment and an ordinance amendment. So it sounds like we'd want to integrate all of our tools.
The policy that I read was created in 2004 and there's some, I don't know, there's some glaring errors in it. Like the amount of flow that we have in the districts and the link, I mean, it's just technical stuff. It has no bearing on, you know, what the policy was intended to do, but will that be updated also?
I think we want to look at everything.
Yeah.
It was adopted in the beginning of.
I mean, those are just technical things and have nothing to do with what we're trying to achieve with the policy.
Yeah, it's the.
Did you guys write the policy?
Yeah, it's the fog program manual that was written at the start of the fog control program. So it certainly needs to be updated to reflect current policies. And then what you want to be able to do is use that as your, like in your SSMP, you have your fog control program section. You'd like to have your fog control program manual be the driving, here's what we're doing with our fog and then reference that document in the SSMP. So if you want to make changes to your fog program, you just change the manual and then you don't have to keep re-adopting your SSMP every time you want to make a little change.
Both of the, both of the things that you attached for us to read in the agenda report will be updated?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Rob, maybe I can, Scott, either one of you. If, after reviewing this letter, do you have a recommendation for us to enact all the conditions and/or do we need further study or?
You know, that's solely up to, that's up to you. As I mentioned earlier, I think all the recommendations that Joe has outlined in his letter is good to do. As you know, you've taken a position, you don't want to take action, you don't want to take action in the study session. So if you want to adopt those recommendations, you can direct staff to bring this back on your September board meeting and give us direction, you want to adopt these recommendations. And then we'll come back later with the draft ordinance with an updated policy and program, all that stuff, have those all in place so you can officially adopt them.
I'd be comfortable with that approach personally. I'm on the rest of the board, but.
I agree. I believe EEC always looks out for our best interest. They did wonderful, they were wonderfully helpful with our original ordinance. They very much helped out on the amendment that I was referring to, that when it went from Joe to Allen into the operations code and with this, the same procedure. You've seen it, it's good enough. Once it goes to Allen, it'll be sussed out some more and then you're ready to go.
Yeah, I think each one of these recommendations, you know, that's why we kind of start sentences with evaluate. Need to be hashed out and discussed a lot internally between all of us, but yeah, each one of these are ones that we would definitely recommend implementing.
I would say that bring it back to a sort of future meeting for.
Yeah, we won't have time to, because the agendas reports are due in a couple of days for next week, right? Yeah, so I'm not going to, we're not going to have time to bring you a draft ordinance, draft for the board, but at least we'll get official direction from you at your September board meeting. Yes, move forward with recommendations and we'll come back with all the documents revised for you.
Set on the 20th?
Yes, yes, yes.
Are there any other highlights on this that you'd like to mention?
No, I don't, I don't know that there is necessarily. I think, I think one that would just be a big change to the, probably the largest change to the way we're handling inspections right now and the inspection frequencies of FSEs would be if we identify a non-compliance for a facility, mainly for fog related in a grease interceptor, so exceeding the twenty-five percent rule, would be to automatically bump their inspection frequency to quarterly for the, for at least, you know, two inspection, so for at least like a year. And then if they have another non-compliance within that year, then you, you know, you can further elevate enforcement actions from there. So start with letters or even administrative fines or hearings or whatnot. But that's not something we typically do now, where immediately after an inspection, we permanently bump up their inspection frequency. Usually it's once a year or periodically we'll evaluate facilities to determine if they need to be elevated, so this would be more proactive.
We've got to move along here.
Charge for inspections?
No.
So what does it matter if they're giving them an extra inspection for them?
We have an ordinance, we have a policy that we can charge them for the inspections.
Because that would be my recommendation and that's when we, you know, we have to charge, give them. Because that would be my recommendation, and that's when we, you know, we have to be charged with an inspection. That's something because otherwise it's just an ordinance that you're coming into their property again, whatever you hear.
Well, I think that should, maybe that should be something, you know, that we do a little more review on.
Because it doesn't really have any teeth that you can say, oh, I'm coming in and you're inspecting.
Ultimately, it can have teeth, but it's ultimately...
It's established, it's going through the process of enforcement. And so you have to have your initial inspections and findings and document your findings so that if you do want to come back with teeth, then you have this history to present to them.
Kind of like the Scully Law of grease ordinance.
You have to build your case against them.
I mean, it's a stepwise process.
And I think also still, I don't think that the policy of being business-friendly and educational with this program first. You know, we're out there trying to educate these facilities, not necessarily drop hammers on them. And so I think we want to work with them. You know, when we go out and if they're having repeated non-compliances, we want to ask them, you know, what's going on? Why is this happening? Why can't you guys get in compliance? And what can we do to help? And I think that's still the approach we want to take with them. But if someone's just not willing to get in compliance, then you have to elevate it.
Yeah, in your opinion, do you think that we're moving too fast to put it on as a public hearing at the next meeting we have? Or do you think we should first tackle the draft and then this?
Well, I think similar to like what Scott was saying, in the next board hearing on the twenty-seventh, is just approving us to revise the ordinance and revise the policy. And then we'll put together the draft policy and the draft ordinance and hash that out. Certainly we'll need time to go through it in detail to make sure we're getting all the fine points and not missing anything. Was it the twentieth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like Joe said, I mean, we can easily prepare a staff report with all the recommendations you just heard today and get your blessings to move forward with recommendations, because you don't like taking actions on the study session. We'll get your blessings, move forward, we'll come back at a later time with all the documents, revised documents for your adoption.
I feel more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
I feel like we're doing the cart before the horse or something.
No, we asked, that's what our plan was, I think originally, like you said.
You've got direction as to where we are on this.
Correct.
And Mr. Chair, could I just add that Director Rooton and the rest of the folks participating in that discussion do bring up a good philosophical issue you might want to be thinking about, and that is if the lack of compliance triggers further efforts on our part, is that can be part of just preparing a case against them that we will absorb the cost? Or under our theory of making those who have the burdens on our system pay the cost of those burdens and their fair share, that maybe that should be a cost they bear if they trigger additional inspections because they did not comply? So that'll be a philosophical discussion you'll want to have at the time.
I can see that, and we'll, I'd at least have a conversation about it, you know. Okay, Joe, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your input. Okay. State of the annual, third annual state of the district.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Gina Tirona is going to give this report, but I'll mention a quick introduction. So this is our third annual state of the district events. The big difference this time is that we're proposing to have it in the morning from nine to ten instead of having it on the evening. We found that many agencies have their state of the district or state of the union, state of the city address in the morning or afternoon. So we thought we'd give it a shot to do it at nine o'clock in the morning. We do have some list of accomplishments to go over and some activities for people when they arrive. So I will turn it over to Gina, and she can go into more details on what we plan for October third.
Yes, thank you. So the state of the district is going to be structured similarly to past state of the districts where we have a presentation from President Schaefer. And so we have a list of accomplishments that are in the staff report of different topics that we can discuss and go over as part of our accomplishments for the year. So this includes our launch of the Citizens Advisory Committee, which we had this year, the process of transitioning from an at-large to a by-district election system in 2020, as well as the launch of our Citizens Environmental Protection Academy. We're also in the process of installing solar panels at district headquarters. And we also had the goodwill donation event that was held at OCC, which we talked about today. We also had a number of new programs that we rolled out this year, which include the district-wide HHW collection program. We have free rollout assistance for seniors and disabled residents. We did revise the reward structure for the alkaline battery recycling program. And we also launched a new program called the sewer inspection rebate program. So those are all things that we've done this year that we can share. And then we also want to share things that are coming up in the future. So we are currently working on performance measurements that staff is putting together so those can potentially be shared at the state of the district. We're also hosting...
Go over that again. I didn't understand what you said about performance.
Performance measurements, that's something that staff is working on, just some key data to represent what we do in each department.
Yeah, thank you. I'll go a little more detail. So performance measurements is widely used in local government agencies around the country to demonstrate to the elected officials, to staff, and to the public on how well they're performing. It's basically a bunch of data collection. You sent a benchmark to achieve, and based on the data collected, you see if you achieved that benchmark or not. And if you don't achieve it, then, you know, the goal is not to punish staff, but the goal is to, okay, we didn't achieve it. What are we doing now? What can we do differently to achieve that benchmark? It's a philosophy of continually thinking on how to improve. That's basically what it is. And so we've been working, we put a committee together, we put together some measures that we thought would be valuable to you and to the public to get a little better understanding of how we operate and the data that we collect. It's not, I see some organizations that measure hundreds and thousands of measurements. It's nothing like that. I want, the goal was really to get something that's easy to understand, simple to read, and they go through it really quick. You know, I've seen really thick document pages. It's nothing like that. So we're going to kick that off to you here in about a month or so. Yeah, you know, I was going to present to the CAC tomorrow night, but Chairman Mike Carey is out of town, and he wanted to see it. So we'll present that to them. We want to present to the CAC first, so we'll present that in October. And then we'll present it to you later for your consideration. And then if you approve it, then we will adopt some policies, make a regular procedures to collect data and continue to evaluate. We will share it with you on a quarterly basis on how we're doing. And then the ultimate also plan is to send it for some awards. I know the International City Management Association, they have a big program on agencies that do performance measurements. So we want to kick that off to them as well. So I think it's another tool to demonstrate how well we're performing and what areas we need to improve.
That's why I brought it up, because education does it, you know, Newport Mesa does that for their teachers, performance review, basically.
Yeah, but it's not performance review on the employees, you know, it's a performance review on the organization.
Not on employees.
No, no, see, I mean, that's the key, that's a big difference. I know OCSD, they do measures, they do performance measures. It's like, a measurement, a goal would be, you know, zero SSOs, right? That's a benchmark. So, okay, we had two SSOs, why did we have them? What did we learn from that? How can we ensure that we don't have zero SSO? Something like that. It's not a performance, it does not tie into performance evaluation at all.
I was, I'm glad you told me that, because I thought it was.
Yeah.
You know, I applaud you for changing the sewer inspection rebate program, and I'm assuming that's for the residences. And I would add the word residence in there because if somebody Googled this and they looked at it, they wouldn't know whether it's for our two hundred and twelve miles of sewer. So I would, and you can still use the acronym if you put sewer inspection residential rebate program. I think that's, this is a further clarification from the CCTV, which is in the main lines also. So I think you're moving in the right direction.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you, Gina. Are you finished?
Just a couple more things. As far as things that are coming soon, we're also going to talk about our next iteration of the Citizens Environmental Protection Academy, which is going to be in spring. And then we're also going to be doing a mulch giveaway event next spring. So we can kind of give people a heads up about that at the state of the district. And then I also wanted to share, in terms of advertisement, we did send out over a hundred postcards to elected officials and staff from local agencies. We also included advertisements in the fall newsletter, on our website, social media. And we're also doing emails through our GoGov outreach application and also through MailChimp. So we sent out about a thousand to residents that way. And then we'll use all of our regular channels, Peach Star for the school district. We're going to post it on the Chamber of Commerce website, and we're going to ask the city to put it in their Costa Mesa minute videos.
Peach Star, how does that work for us? It's through Newport Mesa?
Yes.
And what do they do for us?
So it's a free service, and it's all online. We basically can upload a flyer onto the website, and they'll distribute it via email to all of the parents of the different schools.
That's awesome. I didn't know we were part of that.
Gina, are we going to have some equipment on display for the public? Was that the plan? Like our cleaning truck or their CCTV trailer?
It's something we could do.
Is that something we planned? We were planning on, you know, like I said, making some activities for people who want to attend, maybe have one of our cleaning trucks and the CCTV trucks here. It will take up some parking spaces, that's the only issue. But if that's something you want us to do, we can do that as well. So we're really seeking some direction from the board. If this is what you want us to present, if there's anything we're missing you want us to present?
I had one thought. I thought maybe an update on the Paris facility, where, what we've done and where we're at and what they have to do still. But I told you that before. I thought maybe if you want to consider that.
Sure.
But just a thought.
Will this contractor be out of here before then?
That's our plan, yeah. Hopefully, I'm hoping we're going to get done this week or early next week. The solar panels just arrived, so that's good.
Okay.
No, so is everyone comfortable, the board comfortable with what we're presenting? Any other suggestions?
You could wait. Orange County Sand District is doing their state of the district middle of September. If you, you might invite them, they might get some ideas, or you could wait if you want more ideas.
They always gave us the good, they gave us the good ideas the first one we went to.
Okay, thank you.
They came to the last presentation that we had.
Yeah, they did. Do you think nine o'clock is going to be a headache at all for us or...
We'll see, you know, yeah, we'll find out. We'll see what kind of turnout we have, and so we can always make adjustments.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or staff? Okay, item seven, considered contribution program application for Costa Mesa High School Foundation, Oktoberfest Annual Gala. That was quite a mouthful.
Yes, Gina Tirona will be giving this report.
Okay, thank you. Yes, item seven is a contribution request from Costa Mesa High School Foundation. It's for their Oktoberfest Gala, which is actually taking place this Saturday, September fifteenth, at six PM at Hill Crest Park. We don't typically have contribution requests on study session agendas, but we've included it here because we received this request after our last board meeting. And as I mentioned, it is this Saturday, so this is the only time that we have to consider it. So this is an event that the district has not sponsored before. The sponsorship levels are outlined in the staff report, and they've requested the amount of $1,000, which is the gold sponsorship level. And this would include the sponsor's name on event flyers, an item in the giveaway goodie bags, a link to the district's website from the event website, and also admission and reserved tables for up to eight guests. I wanted to point out that the only major difference between the silver and gold sponsorships is that the gold includes eight admissions and the silver includes four. So it is worth considering if any board members are available to attend this weekend. If the board would like to sponsor this event, the sponsorship can be made for the purpose of advancing the district's purpose through increased visibility. And just to provide some information about the Costa Mesa High School Foundation, it was formed in two thousand and three to manage an endowment by CJ Seeger-Schrimminn Sons, which funds enhanced educational opportunities at Costa Mesa High School and Middle School. They've provided over $500,000 in grants to teachers, and they host four annual events, including the Costa Mesa Community Run. They have a summer mixer, they have their fall gala, and then they have the December home tour. So that's all the information I have. I have to answer questions.
With it being a Saturday, they don't know that we're participating. How are they going to get our information on the flyers?
That's something I'm not sure of. I did attach the flyer to the staff report, and currently their flyer doesn't have any sponsors on it. So I don't know that they would be able to add us onto their flyer. They may just put us on their website if we sponsor. It's six PM, so late afternoon or evening.
Saturday night?
Six?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, if I might, Gina, how would the event advance our purposes? What message would we get out that would advance the sanitary district's purpose?
Well, in their contribution request, they didn't really state anything specific. So I've just sort of relayed what they've put on their application. All they would really do for us is show our logo in terms of putting it on their website and having us at the event.
I wouldn't be voting on a thousand-dollar participation at all. That'd be way too much for late entry into this. I don't think we'd get any benefit from it personally. I like the idea of helping them, but at this late age, it might be not as, not well designed, you know. That's just me talking.
Anybody else have a...
Even though I'm a Costa Mesa graduate, but...
Turncoat.
No, I went to Mesa. But I think it's late, but and a thousand dollars seems a little high for... Is this a new gala that they're having or not, you know? Have you had that in the past, Jim, do you know? I've never...
I think, I think they have.
This is the first time they've asked us to sponsor, so they've had it in the past.
Do you have flyers?
No, we haven't. They gave us their flyer.
Okay, because I have my flyers. At the same time, I think that we are customers as far as all the parents involved, you know, in this. And we serve them, and that means something. And not only that, but they participate with us in a lot of things that go on with our...
Yeah, they do, well, you know, not really.
You know, perform, you know, that, you know...
Foundation.
I normally go to the gala, and I have another commitment that night, so I wouldn't be able to go. So having the thousand-dollar request, I think it's a bit much for us to get involved. But I would support, you know, the five-hundred-dollar request.
Mr. Vice President, if I may, I think what District Council Burns was getting at is that you still need to, what's the purpose? If we're giving $500, how are they going to meet our purpose or demonstrate our purpose? And what are they going to do? Just putting a logo on the flyer does not talk about how to recycle.
That's what I'm saying. If it's on Saturday night, and we only have a couple of days left, it's going to be hard for them to produce this for us. Maybe we let them know that in the future we would...
And maybe in the future also give some suggestions, how, you know, how does it meet our purpose? How, given you $500, what are you going to do to help us meet our purpose, you know?
Yes, if I might echo onto what the manager just said, which is, I totally agree with. It wouldn't take very much effort on their part, even if we provided the flyers, to put a flyer under each plate saying, remember to recycle. Do something. But I mean, we have to advance, it's not about they gave us a table to sit at. It's that they advanced our purpose, and the taxpayers got to benefit from it. So that's where I'd like to see the board go so that they're protected in their decision.
Well, it has a checkoff list here. One of them is, I don't know if you saw it, but advertising CMSD program on the event's website, let's see, that's not it. A booth, we could have a booth there and then have the staff, you know, man the thing.
Those are our requirements that we ask them to check if they're available to us. So they haven't checked any of those, and they haven't made a booth available to us. so they haven't checked any of those and they haven't made a booth available to us.
I think they're just planning, they're just planning on putting a logo on their, on their flyer, that's all they're planning on doing.
No, okay.
I, I think I misspoke, I've attended the Estancia Teewinkle Found, Foundation in the past, is, is this a different?
This is Costa Mesa High, that's different.
Yeah.
Again, my suggestion is, is maybe it's a little too late this year, but next year maybe we could work with our staff, so I hear some suggestions that we, we can make some suggestions to put on the application, to make it easier decision for you.
It sounds like they have more than one gala, like they have two or three galas, so maybe the next one, if we have enough notice, they can participate. Then, they say they have the gala in the spring and somebody.
We have a, I think they call it a summer mixer, and then the Costa Mesa Community Run, which we did.
Yeah, we already sponsored that.
Sponsored.
I, I would say we have to not make a motion to accept this, just to, well, I mean, that's my motion.
I think we need to explore.
We're not gonna make a motion anyway.
Yeah, we were going to today.
Yeah, we need, we need, because of such short notice, that's why we put on the agenda. Typically, we put this on the board, board meeting, but because of such short notice, we're asking you to take action today.
I think we need to explore how we can better interact with them in the future.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said.
To meet our purposes.
Yeah, let them know that we're interested, that we need more information and more timing, so we can look at it.
So, you're not gonna do any kind of donation at all?
I'm not, I'm personally not, but I, my recommendation is we don't from the sanitary district.
I work with the Citizens High School Environmental Academy, so that's, they have students that are working in the issues surrounding the environment, that perhaps they could talk to the teachers that are in that academy and work with them and suggestion about putting the flyer under about the organics, because government ground also does SD 100 that could be addressed, that would help support, because every time someone is recycling, there's food waste and the chemicals can reach, and that's important to do with that, and it just encourages your mission of trying to increase your diversion rates as well. The concept thing is, I think that more education could be, and my neighbor doesn't understand the concept, I asked him the day because he was, he doesn't even understand it, why, you know, you guys are doing it.
Well, I, I think we'll just ask staff to respond to them and tell them the reason why we're not.
There was a motion on, on the floor, did you want to take action on that, or what'd you want to do, and then we can, you know, we can, I want you to take that, we can go back to them and, and walk them through for next year.
I made a motion not to accept this year because of the timing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Closed?
And so, my understanding from the direction of the board, you want us to go back and, and talk to their staff and kind of walk them through the application process and how they can be successful next time.
We just know we have to justify the thing and give us something to justify it with.
I have a curiosity, how, when do we receive this? Were we late getting it?
Yes, we received it after our last board meeting, so I think it was.
Rob?
I think it's good that you go to them and say, you have to further our purpose for us to be able to donate and get them understanding that, and suggest to them that when you come back next year, put that there, say, we're gonna help you.
Exactly.
Further your message.
Mr. Chair, isn't this kind of a common issue that keeps arising, is that, you know, they, do we need to maybe more carefully get that message to all of the groups that ask for our help, that, you know, it's not just, we can give you money, but that, you know, let us help you.
You know, it'd be some tangible thing.
Advance our purpose somehow, can you, can you hand out this flyer with each plate, or can you do, put a banner up, or can you?
That's a point, point.
Make something to give to them that says that.
That's a good point, well, maybe, you know, if you want, we, we do not give you an application until we see that kind of information on there, you know, we work with, with the applicant saying, we can't, we can't present this to the board unless you identify how it's gonna meet our purpose, and we can help, we can give some suggestions, but if they don't want to do it, then, sorry, we're not gonna submit the application to the board.
I, I would suggest that on the application form, you know, we, we provide examples of how they could potentially help us, because I, I think what Judy said, you know, you know, they're, they're just getting in, they're, they're in the mode of, you know, needing money.
Right.
And, and, and they, they've asked for it.
We, we do, we do put.
They, they don't know what to do.
We do put examples in the, in the application, I know, just don't think they read it, to be honest with you, and so that's why we need to kind of walk them through it.
What if we also?
Now, they're just, they were just ignorant, you know, basically, chose not to.
What if we put something in the newsletter saying, for those of you who are interested in?
Well, I, I guess.
I don't, I.
I think the newsletter is.
Yeah, I wouldn't.
Wouldn't it be better if we had a, a point person assigned to interacting with these groups that are seeking this money, that, that spends time with them saying, here's the, here's the level of information we need?
Yeah.
Here's, here's what you have to prove to get, you know, there's a burden here to establish something to get the money, it's not just a checkoff, you get a thousand dollars.
My suspicion is, they have all kinds of ways they can help us, they just haven't thought it through. So, a point person would be, you know, could interact with them.
Great idea.
Yeah, okay, so maybe you can appoint somebody on the staff to kind of.
I think, I think, I think we have a point person in mind.
Okay, we got, thank you.
Okay, we are at the end of our agenda, like to close the open session and adjourn to a closed session. We could have everyone who's not supposed to be here.
Can I move, Steve? Are we gonna go in the back room or?
Yes.
And that would be pursuant to Government Code 54956.921, the Schenckman case on our Voting Rights Act litigation.
Okay, we're now in a closed session and we're adjourning to open session, and there's nothing, nothing to report. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.